Roll call.
Councilman Russell.
President.
Councilman Miller.
President.
Councilman Bob.
Howdy.
Councilwoman Austin.
President.
Councilman Wisham.
Here.
All right, will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, in remission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President, I would like to make a couple of adjustments to tonight's agenda. I would move that we add an HWC update under Presentations to the status of our plans. In addition, a presentation from Boone County Mentoring. And then I would further move that we table under New Business, Items K and L, and move Item I to the end of New Business to be, to occur before discussion of Town Maintenance Bond Language. No removal.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero. So, under Presentations, up first we have an update from HWC. Good evening.
Good evening. It's good to see everybody tonight. Quick update on the status of the various plans that we have going on. I'm gonna provide a handout before you start that off. Ask those all to handle. We have several plans that are going on right now, and we're starting to move into the adoption phase of those plans. So what we want to do first tonight is give you a heads-up on where each one of those plans stands, and give you a little bit more background, specifically on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, as that would be the first document that would be up for approval. Again, my name's Corey Weitzel, and with HWC Engineering. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan, the draft is complete. I believe that document has been emailed to all of you. If any of you needs a hard copy, let Nathan or myself know, and we can certainly get you a hard copy for your review of that document. What we would ask is if you have any questions on that document, or concerns, or any changes you'd like to make, let us know over the next several weeks. These need to be approved by early April, so we'd really like to see us approved at your next board meeting for that document. The other documents that are coming up for approval, the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan is coming up. That document, a draft, is complete. We are having a public presentation on February 20th at the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee meeting. The public is welcome to attend to find a full detailed presentation of that plan. And then we would be bringing a brief presentation to you at your next meeting to provide you guys specifically with an overview of what that plan is. Ultimately, the request would be to adopt that at your April meeting coming up. The intent with that document is to update as amendment to the comprehensive plans, so it would also need to go through plan commission, and we're gonna work through that process. Thoroughfare Plan is also being updated with a number of changes going on. That document is still a little bit in flux, but it's really starting to get settled down. We will be sending that out for your review here shortly, certainly before your next meeting. We can provide you an update at that point. We continue to work on the Legacy Core Revitalization Plan, and we anticipate the draft of that document to you at your next meeting. There's still some challenges that we're working through there. We're gonna do everything we can to hit that schedule. We want to get that one right, and we continue to take our time to make sure we're making the best decisions possible. And then we continue to work on Capital Improvements Plan. The key challenge of Capital Improvements Plan is we want to get all the miscellaneous plans to settle out, and once the various projects and priorities from those plans have settled out, we will bring that to you with a draft. And there's a detailed schedule on the various adoption in your attachment, it's the second page. I won't go through that line by line.
Can I ask a question about that, though?
Absolutely.
You have us adopting the Parks Plan, Bike Plan, Thoroughfare Plan, and Legacy Core Plan on March 14th, yet you're saying comments are due on all plans March 30th. So that would be after we would adopt the plans? That you're asking for comments?
We are asked, we're going to introduce it in March, and we are not going to ask you to adopt those plans until April.
Okay, because it says adopt in the next meeting.
We want to adopt the Parks Plan in March. The Parks Plan is the one document that needs to be adopted ahead of the others. So at your council meeting in March, we would ask that you take action on the Parks Plan, and they will provide a brief introduction to the other plans.
Okay, when are you planning on comments being due on the Parks Plan?
If you can give me any comments before your next meeting, we can make any changes before the next meeting. So we'll take those up until the next council meeting. The, just to provide a real quick overview of what is in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, the third page of that document does give kind of an understanding of some of the key themes and the priorities. I won't go through that in detail, but certainly the change, what you'll see in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan is this continued theme of how does the Parks and Recreation Master Plan respond to growth, but also to your demographic of young families that are in this community. There's some good things going on with Parks Plan. Even though you've grown so much, we're seeing that most residents still live within about a half a mile of your existing parks. To keep that up at your rate of growth is really a great accomplishment for you, but it's something that sets a bar that you'll want to continue to try to manage. You know, how do you maintain that high level of service through your park system as you continue to grow? Part of that is making sure you have continued connectivity with trails, and that fits into this Trails Master Plan, this Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan that we've been working on. There are challenges with your parks, namely, we've seen gaps in the need for indoor recreation facilities. We've seen not a lot of passive and natural recreation facilities in the community, aquatics. I don't think any of those are new. Those are things that have been talked about a lot, but those are big challenges, and so this plan will, does begin to address those. Youth sports fields were another consistent concern of questioning, how do you manage the need for more and more youth sports fields, realizing that's not just a Whitestown issue, but that is a regional issue that you're partnering with those youth sports organizations to address. And then the last challenge that we continue to look at in this plan was, how do you manage all the work that's going on, all the facilities, more mowing, more maintenance? As you grow, it takes more staff to do that, and so beginning to set a plan for how do you respond to that by adding maintenance and operations staff to do what it takes to take care of the systems that you're putting in place. And so we've set some recommendations to address each one of those. You can see those in detail in what is here. The bottom line is, there's work to do on each one, and the action plan spells out how we will slowly start to take steps to move that forward. Be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the plan, and be happy to go into any more detail on anything that you would have questions about.
Any questions? Can I get a hard copy?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Get my one. It's good to see everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, under Presentations, is Boone County Mentoring. Good evening.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
My name is Matt Wilson, and I am the Executive Director of the Boone County Mentoring Partnership. I wanted to provide you all with some of our marketing pieces that further explain or touch on the various programs that we offer and why we exist. Without going too much into the history of how we got started, I will say that we've been a nonprofit for a couple of years, and originally, it started out, prior to our nonprofit status, as a, primarily a mentoring program in Lebanon. Our board, when they formed the Boone County Mentoring Partnership, had the vision that it would not be Lebanon only, but if there was any young person in Boone County who could benefit from having a mentor in their life, then they wanted to assure that they could be matched with a mentor. And that's primarily what we do. We currently have two programs. One is at the, is the Graduation Coach Program at Lebanon High School that we brought under our organizational umbrella. The second and primary program is our mentoring program. And if you think Big Brothers, Big Sisters, very similar model to what we do, but we're uniquely for Boone County, for Boone County kids, and our mentors have some connection with Boone County, whether they live, work, play, attend church here in Boone County. We also try to make those, make matches based on the geographical proximity, along with interests and strengths and needs and personality. Currently, we have over 70 matches countywide. We've seen a number of young people from the Whitestown and Zionsville area sign up for our program as well. In fact, we've got about six or eight boys in this area alone that are on a waiting list, waiting for mentors. We have about a little over 70 matches. We try to take great pride in the matches that we make, because we want them to be long-lasting relationships. We just don't, we don't want to just put two people together because it's convenient. We want to make sure that those interests match and those personalities match. And we do these things because we believe in the power of mentoring, because, not only because statistics show the improvement that young people make by having a positive adult role model in their life, but we get to hear the stories. We get to hear kids say that their mentor that they've had for a couple of years is not just their mentor, but their friend, or that their mentor is their rock, or you hear parents talk about how their child has grown so much because they see another adult who's willing to spend time and invest in them. And so that's really what we do, and we're embarking this year, 2018, on absorbing an additional program that is not outside the realm of our intended mission, and that's a youth assistance program. The Youth Assistance Program, there's a little pamphlet in there. We're in process of working out the final agreements. It's in the attorney's hands, so we're just waiting for those to be completed. But what the Youth Assistance Program does is it serves as a central hub for connecting youth and families with the appropriate resources and services that may help them and benefit them. For instance, if a child is experiencing some kind of anxiety, and the family just doesn't know where to turn to, they can be referred to our Advocate for Youth Assistance Program, and they would assess those needs and get them connected with the appropriate resources, whether it be counseling, whether it be a physician, or even mentoring. The model follows a model that's been in Hamilton County for a few years and has found great success, and mentoring was a piece of their model, so it just made a natural fit for us to come together and absorb their programming as well. What we are looking for is to partner with as many people and as many entities in our community as possible, because what we see, we don't want to be reactive, but proactive. We want to see that this generation that is growing up now is that generation that is going to lead our community to that next level. And that is not going to be possible without people pointing to them now. So, we're looking at all the various entities, private donors, private individuals, corporations, government entities, to come alongside and partner with us, whether it's continuing to recruit mentors, whether it's from a financial end, or just being a big cheerleader for us as well. That'd be incredibly helpful.
You asked for both male and females to be mentors, and what do you, what is someone that wants to be a mentor? What did I have to do? What are you looking for in mentors?
What we're looking for mentors are people who are willing to take four hours a month of their time to just spend time, get to know a young man or a young lady who would have similar interests, personalize that match well. They'd have to be able to pass a background check, obviously. And we are in need of male mentors. We have a tendency to have women sign up and less girls sign up for our program. Not to say that there aren't girls out there that could benefit from having another person there for them, but we are always on the hunt for male mentors.
So, I'll say from my perspective, I think we'd be very glad to partner with you in all the ways, trying to recruit mentors, be a cheerleader, and hopefully, down the road, help out financially even, as long as our legal counsel approves of it.
Thank you. I'd be, I'd welcome any questions you guys would have. My contact information, as well as our program director's contact information is provided in the material as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right, Section Three is the Clerk Treasur Report. Were there any questions on any of those reports? All right, moving on to Number Four, Department Reports. Any questions or comments?
Just seems like 2017 was a big year, and 2018 is building to be even bigger, so looking forward to how this year goes.
All right, next is the Public Request to Speak section. I think... So we only had one person sign up, Carol Sparks-Drake, and it was on the item that we removed. So would you still like, would you still like to speak on the issue? You can come forward now if you'd like to. Yes. Okay. Up next is Approval of the Consent Agenda. What?
Yeah, the motion that was presented tabled.
New Business A.
Uh, no.
It was K.
K and L.
Oh.
Yes.
Sorry. Did not. I had it wrong. Sorry. I thought it was A.
I'll speak more clearly next time. I apologize.
All right.
Mr. President, I move the Adoption and Consent Agenda, including Item A, January 10, 2018 Meeting Minutes. Item B, Claims, January 2018 Expenses Town, January 2018 Revenues Town, January 2018 Utility Claims, Water Operating, Wastewater Operating, Wastewater Capacity. Item C, Approval of Low Bid for Shops at Anson, Utility Relocation. Item D, Approval of an Easement, REMC. Item E, Joint Use and Maintenance Agreement with Endot. Item F, Resolution Approving the Appointment of Appraisers for the Sale of Real Estate in Connection with the South Main Street Park Project. Item G, Expenditure Exceeding $5,000, WFD Automated Fire Station Alerting and Dispatching Proposal. And Item H, Expenditure Exceeding $5,000, WPD Body Cam.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Consent Agenda is adopted, five to zero. Next is Unfinished Business, and Letter A is Ordinance 2018-01, and it is on second read tonight.
Ordinance 2018-01, Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, Amending Ordinance 2017-44, 2018 Salary Ordinance. So, Mr. President, I move the Adoption of Ordinance 2018-01.
I have comments.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
First, I'm gonna bring up the stats. You brought up a new position that you were talking about, and you actually were using the Business Operations Supervisor Staff Accountant Title from Plainfield. Now, I sent comments out, and I didn't get anything back from other, to the rest of council, that this should be a CPA position. We have grown to that point where we need CPA, and with that, we could actually save a little bit of money. I think it would...
I think the only thing you're gonna be faced with is CPAs make $125,000, $150,000 a year.
In fact, I introduced you to a CPA municipal experience that was willing to do a front to seventy. There are some out there. So I would suggest that we look at them before we do this, because we're at the point where we could use a CPA.
My response to that would be that I don't think it needs to be a CPA, and I don't think that we could afford someone that would be a quality candidate that has a CPA.
We're spending well over $200,000, north of $200,000 on an accounting firm. To bring that CPA in-house, no, we'd still have some accounting issues out there, but we could certainly reduce that bill probably to the point where it would pay for that CPA. And it would give better response to the departments in the town to have a CPA in-house.
I'd like to add, I think it'd be good if we just took a step back and just looked at it from a big picture, you know, what's best for the town. And I believe what's best for the town is maybe bringing in some resumes, looking at resumes for people for a position with qualifications, or people with experience, CPAs, controllers, those types of individuals, and see what they're asking for. I've seen resumes out there anywhere from $70,000, $80,000, $90,000 a year for somebody with a lot of experience, and if we get the right person with the right experience, it'll meet the State Board of Account requirements that were mentioned, and it will help us possibly save money on our REDI expenditures. So if there's a win-win there, I think it's worth us exploring it, you know, to be responsible with the money, seeing what's best for the town and moving forward. I'm not opposed to the position. I just think it'd be good if we did a little research and see what we could do with the money and the position.
Did the State Board of Accounts say that we needed someone with a CPA? I don't remember that being a qualification.
I don't, when reading that, I didn't see that, but it would make sense.
State Board of Accounts didn't even say anything necessarily about the position. State Board of Accounts said that they would like the council to have a staff member who has an eye not on the Clerk Treasur's office, because they're not doing their job, but they want that second set of eyes to look at this stuff. So other towns have done, most towns do from what I could see, budget analysts, finance analysts, so somebody that can be a watchful eye over, a helpful, helping hand and a watchful eye with POs. Our POs are a very cumbersome process. If we're going to hire somebody that's, what REDI brings to the table is when there's a 1782 notice problem like we've had every year, Eric knows it immediately, and he writes that letter within 10 days. And what happened this year? We got our full budget amount. There's gonna be very few people in the world out there who know those municipal finance items that you're gonna replace an outside firm, which is why most towns have outside firms. All told, I think we, I think our total spending was 90-something on the town side, if I remember right. I can't remember what the total spending on the town side was. There's some spending on the utility side, but the utility is a huge entity. It's a major corporation. They need a, they need an outside source to help do the finances and the bonding, and I mean, imagine the debt they hold and managing that.
Would this position, could it be possible if somebody came in with qualifications, help with the utility side also?
They could, yes, but Nicole really is that. She's our finance manager. We have a finance manager on the utility side. That's Nicole. Nicole does a fantastic job of running the finance office and the billing office, and she's phenomenal, so...
Yeah, just, I'm just looking at the numbers, and if there's a way to reduce the $220,000 we spent with REDI in '17 by bringing in the right person, I don't think it's a bad thing for us to explore that and just make sure with the direction we go.
Was it $220,000?
$220,000 we spent, according to some numbers I asked.
So some of that's for tiffing, some of that's, I mean, a lot of, as a matter of fact, a lot of that is a redevelopment commission. That's REDI's expertise on bonding. I mean, that's tough stuff. You're gonna...
I want to make clear, I'm not saying REDI's not good for us. I'm not saying anybody's not good for us. What I just want to do is explore our options, and if there's a path we're going, just look at a couple other paths and say, you know what, where we are right now, or where we're gonna be in 10 years, let's go this way, and...
Mr. Clerk Treasur, if you wouldn't mind, I would appreciate if you could share with us the breakdown of where those dollars are spent by each group.
So, do you mean just like town and versus utility?
No, each specific...
Okay. Each specific department's that pay. Got it. For 2017?
Yes, please.
I think, just quick, I think we didn't want to overthink the position. It's really a way for, right now, Matt gets POs from nine different people at nine different times. And so one of the goals of this position was streamline that process, have him have one single point of contact to work with those types of things. So I can see what we're saying, but I think we're overcomplicating a relatively simple...
This was a, Susan, if you remember, we had discussed bringing in an accountant several years ago, and it was the idea that we had to wait till we grew a little bit, because we didn't need it at the time.
Kevin, could you please speak into the microphone?
I said, if you remember, and it's back when we were in the Old Town Hall, in fact, where we discussed and we actually approved bringing in an accountant... where we discussed and we actually approved bringing in an accountant, but it was the idea that we had to grow a little bit more, now we've grown.
The accountant position though, Kevin, would still have to reside within the Clerk Treasurer's office. So we're looking at two different.
No, wouldn't.
Yes, we're looking.
Why, why would it have to reside?
Could I please finish? We're looking at two different type of positions here. We're looking at the State Board of Accounts having recommended that we have, the council have an oversight position so that we know what's going on within the Clerk Treasurer's office and that we have a thumb on all of that work that's going on. The Clerk Treasurer always has the opportunity to look at additional positions to help them do their job within their, their function. And that is where some of, that's where some of those economies of scale and reducing outside accounting can come from was from, you know, if, if there are more efficiencies that our Clerk Treasurer can get within his office and has that ability to hire additional people to do that within his office. This is truly an oversight position, I think, I would feel a CPA would be bored in that position because it is, it's a tedious, there are i's dotted, t's crossed, and are we following, following the lines? So I would still be interested in seeing where these, where these efficiencies can come from, of course, from any department because that's what's the previous use of the taxpayer dollars. But I, I don't think that, the State Board of Accounts clearly gave us some marching orders of what they would like us to see. And I was the council member who attended all of those meetings.
I think what we can do is this, the town spent one hundred and thirty thousand dollars now. That's going to include some redevelopment commission items, rate study, if you remember, we, we did that. That, a rate study is expensive. So that, now that's the utility side. We did some stormwater work to set up the stormwater utility, that's a kind of a supplemental and up and above. So I think what we can do is, what we'll do in-house here for you for the next so many days, so many days and get you some information is, is we'll break that down exactly. And then we'll break, we'll give you what was spent just on that accounting item. I know that in January of last year, there was substantial amount of hours that were worked by REED just to reconcile the books. And that was a big bill. And so that, you know, when, when you, when you have those things, it, and that's helping Matt and that's helping Sherri. It was a difficult reconciling, if I remember right, it took a little longer in 2017. We, we can look at, we can certainly look at all the financial things, but we're gonna have some higher bills because of the growth and, and, and kind of those one-off supplemental items that are always being done. When you do a TIF district, that takes a lot of time to do the financial analysis for the TIF district. How much allocation's coming in? What's the financial plan and model for, for the TIF? Right now, you've got four TIF districts on your, on your agenda, two of which are really required because you've passed and signed an MOU with NDOT and you've passed and signed an MOU with Park 130. So when those things come down the pike, those are additional costs that you wouldn't necessarily have that are gonna add up from a, from a, a, a financial firm who, it's gonna be hard to find somebody to bring them in-house to do those particular items because with REED, we get Gary and we get Caitlin and we get Eric and we get Jerry and we get, you know, go on down the list of, very similar to our attorneys. You get multiple levels of expertise to make sure that all these things that a growing town has happening to them are able to be done properly. So it's a good thought, I just, I, I wasn't necessarily trying to get us to start, I, I know I use Fishers and Fishers has a great model now, they have a lot of money. They've kinda started a, it looks like they've started an accounting office, they have a Clerk Treasurer as well, but it looks like they've started an accounting office, they have a staff of four. That wasn't necessarily what this particular position was trying to do. This was more streamlined position, make things a little easier for the department heads and a single point of contact for Matt to ease, much more easily work with POs and, and reconciliations and whatever else the State Board of Accounts with those second set of eyes on.
Councilman Baum, did you have anything to add?
What I was gonna add is that we've set this position up so that one of our department heads would be going out and procuring the resumes and doing the interview process. And I just wanna reinforce my faith in our department heads to be able to, to take their position tables, to take their not-to-exceeds and to find the right candidates and come back to this council with the hires that are gonna do the best for this town. And that they're managing the finances very well so far that we've seen with their, their hires. And I have faith in, in our department leaders and, and in their direct reports to, to move forward on this, which is why I don't wanna start throwing out different requirements that may not even suit the position because we have a misunderstanding of what the position's gonna be. And that's where I don't think I would want to put clamps on this position saying that it has to be a CPA or that we, the council, require something particular for this position. So that was my only comment, is to reinforce my belief in all of our department heads, not just in this particular position, but in all the positions within this ordinance.
Next, my comments have to do with you, Dax, and your, your salary. And Eric, by the way, Dax, one month and a half ago said that Eric would give out something to justify it. Has she never sent anything out on his salary and why it should be raised? But Dax, you did. And you happened to bring up Scienceville, Brownsburg, Plainfield, and Lebanon. Now, every one of those towns have anywhere from Lebanon at double to the others at three to four times the population of this town. You're already making over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Now you mentioned Lebanon and you said, well, the mayor of Lebanon, it's unfortunate that they were not looking at raising his pay. Well, the mayor of Lebanon turned down a salary raise, said that his position, and he's at double the number at the size of this town, said that his position was well compensated at what he was making. So I, at this point, I cannot justify giving, giving you a twelve percent raise on top of your over a hundred thousand dollar salary as it is now.
But, hold on, hold on, this, this isn't a conversation between the council and Dax. If you wanna, if you wanna have this conversation about Dax's salary, have it, have it with the council. Don't call Dax up here, that, that's just inappropriate.
He is the one that responds.
It's in, it's inappropriate.
Eric, he's tried to have, just, I wanna clarify, I believe he has tried to have conversations via emails and there hasn't been responses, so this is his only place where he could get information.
Right, I'm saying we don't need to have Dax up here, let's have a conversation amongst us. This is, I mean, that, that, his, the increase of his NTE on the salary ordinance has nothing to do with him. Zero, okay? So this isn't, this isn't between us and Dax.
If, if I could just speak briefly, I, I think you missed something yesterday when you and I talked and that's, I, I said what? What did I say in my office?
You said you didn't ask what.
Thank you.
You did, and I will say that.
Right.
So why was it put there?
Why was it put there? Because.
I asked for it to be increased. Every year for the last ten years, we have looked at the low end and the high end of our not-to-exceed on our salary ordinance and we've always adopted it five-zero. And we always make sure that it covers anything that might need to be covered throughout the year. It did not mean that the employees receive the top end of those not-to-exceeds. It was to make sure that we were covered. So that if we had a, somebody get a new certification, we made sure that that included enough room that that new certification could be covered. Didn't mean they were gonna get it, it just made sure we covered it. We wanna make sure that we are competitive with the market. We wanna make sure that we are able to reward those employees who are consistently going above and beyond and sending out emails at midnight and working to make us the fastest-growing, best-organized, most respected town in Boone County right now. We want to reward those behaviors and those skill sets that are being brought to the table to make this the best place for Whitestown residents to live. I asked that it be increased just so, one, we don't have to go through this every single year. We've done it many times where we've had a higher rate on that top just so we don't have to talk about it again. Again, it does not mean they get paid that, it just is a range on a piece of paper.
In years past, and Eric, you asked, and I had to go back and I had to, I had to look at this. In years past, we put a cap, we put a cap on individuals and we put a cap on departments. So it didn't matter almost what the ranges were, we put that cap in. And in addition, I'll go back because somebody brought up 2014. 2014, we made it clear that any substantial raises had to come before council itself. We, we got into a fairly substantial discussion, it actually hit the paper over the fact that any substantial raises need to come before us because we're the ones that are fiscal body. There isn't any of that here.
We didn't discuss a raise, we have not discussed a raise.
There hasn't been a raise discussed.
Clearly discussed only.
We're putting it in the sack.
No, no.
We're clearly discussing only the not-to-exceed that goes on a piece of paper that becomes then the guideline for the year.
They're not the same thing, Kevin.
Yes, they are.
No, they aren't. His salary will not go up to that maximum this year. End of story.
Okay. Then why put it in?
Flexibility, Kevin, flexibility, okay?
Okay, I'm gonna bring up the next thing and this has to do with, and this, Dax, we had a discussion about this yesterday, about the planner and the fact that you said that you would discuss with executive council, which I'd like to point out who is executive council up here, number one, I would ask you to do that. Who is executive council?
I'm the executive of the town, that's in sta, that's in state statute.
Yeah, that is, but that's one executive, but it's a, an executive council and no discussion, no discussion with the rest of us, you should be communicating with the rest of us. But there was a discussion at the town planner. We were going to look for a town planner. Now, two months into it, Dax stands up here and he says that one person has stepped up. It doesn't say that that person was promoted, it said that person had stepped up. And I'm glad that person stepped up and I actually asked, would that person get educational? But we hadn't in two months even gone and looked to see if we could get somebody? Where is that search? How about if we had, we'd, that search and even have that person apply? I'm more than willing to have that person apply, but that we put it out and see what we can get on qualified applicants.
How about we not micromanage our good department managers who happened to be, who happened to be in the room here with us? Why, why don't, why don't we let them do their jobs? I think we should.
This is a department head position and that really should make decisions on ours. That's not micromanaging, that is being fiscally responsible.
It's also our responsibility to represent our residents and the concerns of the residents and to just make sure that what we're doing as a town, we're doing the right thing for the residents, we're doing the right thing for the right people. And it's okay to question things, it's okay to ask questions, it's okay to share concerns.
So are there specific concerns with any of the department heads from your constituents? I, I haven't heard any of them, so let me know.
And to, to build on that, Mr. President, I have heard nothing but positive reviews of all of our department heads, including the individual who has been helping the department in planning that you're referring to. I have talked with my constituents, I have talked with those that operate with the town, I have talked with internal partners. She is doing a fantastic job. And I think that is something that is totally being lost here. And to go on this kind of a tirade in public in front of this individual to call, excuse me, sir, may I finish?
Let Councilman Baum finish, hold on, hold on.
You guys need to stop raising your voice and acting like children, have conversations. You interrupted me, how is interrupting me not acting like a child? I am trying to.
Guys, come on.
People are going on tirades, Mr. President, you know, is this how you do it?
Councilman Baum is, is speaking, let, let's let him speak, no, no, no.
Be respectful to everybody, is what you ask for too.
Let's let him speak, that would be respectful.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I was trying to finish, as far as talking about what constituents are saying, I just want to reiterate that the constituents I'm talking to, the ones that have the interactions with the planning department, have been quite satisfied with the product they're receiving and that that individual's done a great job. And again, I express my concerns with making these kinds of comments in this kind of setting in front of all of our employees. And if this is the way that we're going to talk to them, I just, I cannot believe that that's what we're putting them through tonight. Those are my comments.
So I, I don't know what comments you're referring to, what we're putting people through. What we're sharing is our concerns about things that we've been told as a council, that we're gonna interview people, things that we are sharing, that we think it's good to interview people, look at what's best for the town as a whole, we're a growing community. Why, why pigeonhole ourselves into a situation where there could be multiple qualified people who could bring a lot to the town and work with the people that are already here? Why not look at that like we were told we would do? Why not bring those resumes in? And if the person that's here is the most qualified and we wanna go with that, then we can support that. But not looking and not making an effort is not good for the town. We need to do what's best for the town, we need to look at all of our resources, we need to look at everything that's available and then make the decision.
So do you, do you have complaints about any specific department heads or employees? Or are you just gonna say, people are saying this? Because usually that means that the comments don't really exist.
I'm saying this, Eric, I'm saying, I don't think the decisions that are being made are the best for the town long-term. I think we should be looking at positions, we should be interviewing qualified people, we should be choosing what's best for the town, looking at the ten-year plan, doing all that. And if the person that gets hired is the best for the town, I'd support that. But when there's no effort made to interview anybody, when there's no effort made to find candidates to apply, then, and that's not shared, I don't think we're doing everything we can to make sure we're doing the best for the town.
You're, you're clearly talking about one person in this room and every, almost everybody in here knows, knows who it is and that just makes us embarrassing, I mean, this is just.
I'm not embarrassed, I'm sorry you are.
You should be.
Why should it be embarrassed?
Because, because Dax is a, Dax, let me, let me talk. Dax is the town manager and we have full faith in Dax. Dax talks to our outside people who deal with the planning office and they tell us that she's doing a very good job. So shouldn't we trust those people who work with them, who have done this for a living? Dax, Dax is a great town manager and he checks with those people and some of them are sitting in this room tonight that will sit here and tell you how great of a job she's doing. And you just want us to go out and interview and hurt, hurt the morale of the, of, of town government?
Pardon me, the intent was when Lauren left that we would interview. That's what we were told would happen, is we would interview. Two months later, we're being told someone has stepped up, that's great and I say, let's give them an education. Let's give them the education so they're qualified for the job. But nothing was said about not interviewing and not one interview, and was it, was it even advertised?
Well, when you have a competent person doing the job that is doing a good job, why do you need to go out and do interviews? I, I don't know why we have to keep talking about this when she's doing a great job. And I certain, I appreciate the work that she does on a daily basis, 'cause I've only heard positive things.
I appreciate all the town employees, but we're hamstringing us and we don't go out and look for additional qualifications, okay? I've said my piece.
Yeah, we, we can agree to disagree, that's right. Any other comments? None?
No.
Before we move on, I'll just say thank you to all the town employees, you guys do a great job and you do a great job representing us on a daily basis, so thank you to everyone. Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed, say no.
No.
Alright, ordinance passes three to two. Up next, we have letter B, ordinance 2018 dash zero five on second read to add two voting members to the Human Relations Commission.
Ordinance 2018 dash zero five and ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, amending ordinance 2015 dash zero six regarding human relations and discrimination. Mr. President, I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2018 dash zero five.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion that's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Alright, motion prevails, five to zero. Up next, we have letter C, ordinance 2018 dash zero two on second read.
Ordinance 2018 dash zero two and ordinance providing for the timing of health savings account contributions from the town to town employees. Mr. President, I move the adoption of ordinance 2018 dash zero two.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion that's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion is adopted, five to zero. Alright, next we move on to letter A under new business and we had two people signed up to speak tonight. And first is Carol Sparks Drake. Then we had two people signed up to speak tonight, and first is Carol Sparks Drake.
Thank you, good evening, I'm Carol Sparks Drake. I'm here tonight with my husband, Tom. We live at 4995 East, 450 South, Whitestown, where we've lived now for just at 30 years. We are immediately adjacent to the property, which is the subject of this ordinance. We sit just to the east of this property, as well as our horse pasture is immediately to the north. At the outset, I would do need to renew the objections I raised before the Plan Commission, those being that this matter was heard after the statutory time limit within which to do so expired, and also that the petitioners failed to give notice to both the public and us as adjacent property owners, as required by statute. Without waiving those objections, I respectfully ask you this evening to dismiss this petition, or alternatively, to do, to not approve this ordinance. This document right here, the I-65 PUD ordinance, this is the document that controls all the zoning within 1,709 acres inside Whitestown. If you want to change the zoning on any of that acreage, it requires an amendment of the zoning ordinance that's applicable to it, and that's the I-65 PUD ordinance. That's not what the petitioners are attempting to do. They have not notified any of the landowners that would be required to make a modification of this document. Instead, they have come in under the Unified Development Ordinance. This document, you can pretend they are not in the PUD, but what's before you is a petition to change ag zoning to industrial I-1 under the Unified Development Ordinance. That's not what, how the statutes permit you to change the zoning of land that's inside this PUD. You all may remember that just last year, you changed the definition of loading verse. And when you did so, it required a certain notice, because it was coming in under the PUD. And you changed that loading verse definition in the PUD, and it is different now in this. But that change didn't affect the Unified Development Ordinance. The two documents serve to cover very different areas and very different functions. And I submit to you this evening that you can change the zoning within the PUD, but it must be done by an amendment to the PUD, not as the petitioners are attempting to do this evening. The Anson PUD is a comprehensive plan for how 1,709 acres are gonna be developed. The Boone County Commissioners and the controlling developers agreed upon certain usage, including the usage that now applies next door to us. And I would ask that if you're going to go changing that, you look, and it'd be done under the PUD ordinance, not pretending that this is ag land out somewhere in Whitestown, outside the Anson PUD. I've also passed out to you a letter from your planning department that was just issued on January 11th. That's well after the pending petition was filed, and it's applicable to the Emerys land. On 450 South, there are four residences. The Pauls, then the Drakes, then the Roberts, and the Emerys. And your planning department just assured them, on behalf of the Town of Whitestown, in January, less than a month ago, that any future development of the property adjacent to you would have to include, at a minimum, a 200-foot wide green buffer yard on their property. The petitioners this evening, as they explained their proposal at the Plan Commission meeting, said they were gonna be 50 feet away from our property line on the west, and 70 feet away from our property line on the south. We stand in the same position as the Emerys. Your planning department can't issue a letter to the Emerys and not be discriminatory to then tell us, well, we get 200 feet on one end of 450 South, but you're only gonna get 50 feet on the other end of 450 South. So not only do I believe that you do not have jurisdiction to rezone this land, except under the Anson PUD, I also believe that giving us a buffer yard that is less than what your planning department just confirmed to the Emerys would be discriminatory, arbitrary, and capricious, and would certainly be a denial of our due process in equal protection. And I respectfully ask you to dismiss or deny this for lack of jurisdiction. I appreciate your listening to us, and I thank you for your consideration. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions?
I will give you these additional two documents, in addition to the letter from the Plan Commission, for the record.
Thank you. All right, we have one more person signed up to speak, Brian Tuohy. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name's Brian Tuohy, I'm an attorney, and my address is 50 South Meridian, and thank you for your time hearing our side of this case. I represent the developer, petitioner. Here with me tonight are Mr. and Mrs. Paul, who have lived on this property that you're considering to rezone tonight. They've owned the property since 1990, so about 28 years, a couple of decades of time. Thanks for hearing our side of this case. First off, the remonstrator's notion that this board or this town council, the council does not have jurisdiction in this case, is, I don't think is well-taken. And the lawyer for the Plan Commission, John Molitor, said the same thing. Under your Unified Development Ordinance, under section 9.2 E46, there is a specific, specific provision that says that a PUD may be amended, and it may be amended by either the Plan Commission or by a petition signed by property owners who own at least 50% of the land affected by the proposal. It also goes on to say that the town council may initiate the amendment proposal and require the Plan Commission to prepare it. So to say to this town council that you don't have any jurisdiction to amend a planned unit development, your Unified Development Ordinance states exactly to the contrary of that. Essentially, the remonstrators are saying that even though this site is within the Town of Whiteland, the town council or the Plan Commission doesn't have any control over the zoning of that. They can't change the zoning of that. Mr. Molitor disagreed with that the other night at the Plan Commission. The remonstrator also mentioned that there was no notice. Well, there was notice. There was notice sent on December 29th. I've got a certified mail receipt card that they received it. And the remonstrator was the person that actually asked this case be moved into the February Plan Commission hearing. So I certainly can't understand how the remonstrator could say they didn't receive notice. They sent a letter to the Plan Commission and asked them to move this hearing to the February meeting, which was just held on Monday night. And at that Plan Commission meeting, members of the council, the Plan Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval to this. In addition, your planning staff, in a staff report, considered the five statutory requirements necessary for evaluating a zoning change. And they found that the petition for this site met that, those five statutory requirements. And so your planning director and your Plan Commission both reviewed this petition carefully. There was a public hearing held where folks on both sides of the issue at the Plan Commission testified. The Plan Commission carefully considered that testimony, and then unanimously recommended approval of this rezone. So in summary, we've had a case that was properly filed. It was properly noticed. Your Unified Development Ordinance has a provision in it that allows for an amendment of a PUD. Otherwise, it would, according to the remonstrators, the site would always be zoned for a buffer area or a farm. And now the folks that have lived there for 28 years would like to sell their property, and they have a purchaser, who is a medical equipment manufacturer, who testified to the Plan Commission, who would, has indicated this would be a terrific site for them. And so that's what's before you tonight. And based on all that, the statutory provisions in your UDO, the planning director and the planning department's recommendation for approval, and the unanimous vote by the Plan Commission for approval of this, we would respectfully ask that you give favorable consideration of this petition and approve it this evening. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. All right. Now onto ordinance 2018-04.
Ordinance 2018-04, an ordinance amending zoning maps within Unified Development Ordinance of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana. Mr. President, I move the adoption of ordinance 2018-04.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
I'm gonna vote no on this, after listening to both sides.
Okay. Jeff, were you in aye?
I was.
Okay. All right. Motion passes four to one. All right, next we will move on to letter B, ordinance 2018-06. It's on first read in front of us tonight, and this is to, an ordinance to create a substance abuse prevention commission. I think this is, this is something that's much needed in our area, because, I mean, we clearly have a problem throughout the state and in this area with, you know, through the opioid epidemic. I know we've had a number of overdoses here within our own community. So I think it's time to, to actually put this into our code via an ordinance. Would someone like to read it?
Ordinance number 2018-06, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, creating a substance abuse prevention commission. Mr. President, would you like the entire, it written in its entirety? Whereas the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, is aware that alcohol and other substance abuse is an increasing threat to the health and safety of our community. And whereas, according to the data from the 2016 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, 10% of Indiana's population over the age of 12 used illicit drugs in the past month, while 4.95% of the population over the age of 12 misused pain relievers and... Whereas, according to data from the Indiana State Department of Health, Boone County has had 19.7 drug poisoning deaths per 100,000 residents between 2012 and 2016. The vast majority of those deaths having been persons between the ages of 24 and 34. And whereas, Indiana State Department of Health has also documented numerous non-fatal emergency room visits in Boone County due to opioid overdoses. And whereas, Indiana State Department of Health's 2015 Youth Risk Behavior Survey indicates 17.9% of Indiana high school students have ridden in a car with a driver who's been drinking alcohol. 30% currently drink alcohol, and 16.3 currently smoke marijuana. And whereas, the Town Council declares it is in the best interest to promote the prevention of substance abuse and the elimination of deaths related thereto, for the greater good of the public in the Whitestown community. And now, therefore, be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, as follows. One, establishment. There is hereby created Whitestown Substance Abuse Prevention Commission. Two, membership. The commission shall consist of five voting members to be appointed by the Town Council President, with the approval of a majority of the Whitestown Town Council. Town Council members may be appointed as members of the commission. The Town Council President shall further designate the President of the Commission from the commission's membership. As Whitestown is an inclusive community that promotes diversity, equality, and tolerance among all of its citizens, the appointing authorities are also strongly encouraged to appoint additional members with varying and diverse backgrounds. Three, qualifications. Applicants seeking membership to the commission should have a demonstrated interest and concern for substance and alcohol abuse problems in the community. The members of the commission should include persons knowledgeable and engaged in matters of public health. All voting members of the commission shall be Whitestown residents. Four, terms. The initial term for each member of the commission shall expire on December 31st, 2020. Subsequent terms shall be for two-year periods thereafter. Individuals may be appointed for additional terms. Members shall serve at the pleasure of the Town Council and may be removed from the commission with or without cause by a majority vote of the Town Council. Five, meetings. The commission shall hold meetings at least six times each term, and may hold additional meetings as the President of the commission determines to be appropriate. At its first meeting each term, the commission shall select from its membership a vice president and secretary. The commission shall take and maintain meetings of all of its, minutes of all of its meetings. Meetings shall contain, at a minimum, the time and place of each meeting, the names of all the members present, all official acts of the commission, the votes given by members, and a summary of all proceedings before the commission. A member of the town's administrative staff will serve as a non-voting liaison. A majority of the commission members shall constitute a quorum. All official meetings that include a majority of the commission shall be open to the public, except to the extent otherwise permitted by Indiana law. Six, activities in charge. The commission shall have no legal obligations, responsibilities, duties, or governmental authority, and commission membership shall not constitute public office. However, the commission is charged with encouraging public health and safety for Whitestown's current and future generations through the promotion of the prevention of substance abuse and the elimination of deaths related thereto. The goals of the commission include: A, to advise the Town Council in matters pertaining to substance abuse; B, to make recommendations intended to prevent and eliminate the abuse of alcohol and other controlled substances; C, to promote the coordination of programs directed towards youth of the community intended to prevent and eliminate alcohol and substance abuse; D, to evaluate existing programs and policies relating to substance abuse and drug-related crimes, and to make recommendations to the Town Council with respect to policy, programs, and regulations which will further the city's goals; and E, to promote policies of cooperation between government programs and community organizations to strengthen existing alcohol and drug abuse programs. Within its overall mission of promoting the prevention of substance abuse and deaths, the commission is also charged with reviewing, considering, discussing, debating, and advocating on such issues and matters affecting local government and the Whitestown community that its members determine to be important and appropriate, and which are for the betterment of Whitestown and its citizens. The commission is encouraged to identify issues impacting Whitestown that should be considered by local government, seek and develop realistic and efficient solutions, and make recommendations for consideration by the Town Council. The commission shall report to the Town Council on its activities at least two times each term. Seven, effective date. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage.
So since we're only doing first read tonight, there are a couple of things I'd like to have corrected for the next time, and that's in section two of, under Membership, to scratch out, delete, the Town Council President shall further designate the President of the Commission from the commission's membership. That way they can elect, the board can elect their own president. And I would also, on the bottom of the second page, I would like to see it say that they report on activities at least four times each term. And one other thing, Steve, as it's currently written with the one- And one other thing, Steve, has it's currently written with the one Town Council member be one of the five voting members?
Yes, that was the way that I thought.
Okay, that, that is the way it's written. Okay. Those are the only recommended changes that I, that I have.
The one comment I would like to make, and Josh is here, Josh, was it Clinton that had the substance abuse, that they had put a bunch of stuff together around about that?
Yeah.
That I would recommend that either by designation or when you get to the point where we're appointing people, that we include Deputy Chief Clinton Crafton on it, because he's got a bunch of expertise.
Well, why don't, why don't we just put the fire chiefs designate?
Or designate, how's that? Yeah, fire chief.
Can we add that language in there?
Yes.
They're not one of the voting members, but they're an important part of the commission.
I don't know if you want to do the same with the police department, but definitely the police.
No, I, I think it should be, it should probably be both, police and fire. And they can do it themselves or, or they're designated. Dex?
Nathan brought up a good point earlier, that possibly he should be, and I agree, as a Parks Director. Parks Recreation, and we're thinking about turning that into Parks Recreation and Culture. They're gonna have a lot of programs that are gonna be happening as they grow.
So moved.
That the Parks Department and Nathan has, not only with Parks, but other experiences through family with this, so I, I think he'd be a good fit, so I would add, include him as well.
So we'll add the, or designate?
Parks Director, or designate.
Yeah, sure, right, thanks.
Okay. So we'll, we'll come back to it and do second reading next month with those adjustments.
There was a, a seminar tomorrow, but the way things were going, we, we didn't get tickets, but there's a seminar in Cornwall tomorrow that if you want any of the department heads to go to, they may still be able to get tickets about substance abuse.
Yeah.
It's an all-day seminar tomorrow in Cornwall, so I don't know if.
It probably, I mean, if their schedule allowed, but I assume it's last minute, it may not. It would certainly, it would have been a good thing.
Yeah, we, we had discussed it, but because this was on the council agenda, we didn't make the decision to attend.
All right, up next, we have letter C under new business, ordinance 2018-07 on first read.
Ordinance 2018-07, an ordinance of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, approving matters related to the lease financing of the South Main Street Park project.
All right, up next, we have letter D under new business, ordinance 2018-08 on first read.
Ordinance 2018-08, an ordinance amending the Whitestown Employee Manual with respect to PTO days, telecommuting, and flex time.
Within that, Steve, I want to thank you for the time you took that answer and answer all my questions on that that I had on it. You did a very good job. Thank you.
For the purpose of the public, they were good questions. Really, this, this came about this year because the flu is ravaging the building as well as ravaging everybody else. And so, it's really kind of centers around the PTO day. Flex time is, you know, as salaried employees, Steve and I have spoken many, many times. Salaryed employees are 24/7 employees. You know, we all know we should be putting in eight hours, but most of us put in a lot more than that. I know Brittany was here the other night till 10:00 at night, told her to go home. But just having some formal language of flex time in the, because the hourly employees have comp time in the manual. Telecommuting is this. Bad weather for an employee, even say in Lebanon, you know, and this can happen. Lebanon can get 10 inches of snow and we get one. And our guys do such a good job clearing the streets anyway that it's hard to close our facility and make that excuse. You could do a VPN for very cheap. VPNs are not expensive. That protects the information on any computer. Glenn is a great example. He's a great writer. He writes, he does videos, he edits. If we're open and he can't.
That was a separate from Steve.
No, no, yeah, no, I, I, that's where I'm going. Certainly not something we want to tell everybody, hey, it's telecommuting time. It's really for those circumstances that a department head can go, you know, the building's open, but, or, another good example is, we, we have some people, a child might be sick, but the, but the employee is perfectly healthy. Employee has to stay home with the child. The employee has the ability to sign in on the VPN and do town activities while they're home watching their child. And Nathan, a number of us, myself, two-hour delay hits, some of us are, we're the child taken care of. School gets closed, town's still open, there should be an opportunity for a department leader to say, hey, do this activity while you're, while you're there, send in your work when you're done. The PTO days are just, if you're sick, I know Jason was sick for three straight days. We get six hours starting in January for PTO time. You all have determined, and we have determined as a staff, that we don't separate PTO from sick. The state gives like 12 sick days a year, right? Isn't that what that is? Like 7.25 hours per?
You get 7.5 hours every other month, but once you get up to 21 and a half, then it turns into personal time.
Okay, all right. That, that, but the state separates sick days from?
Personal time from vacation days.
We don't do that, so if somebody has the flu, we don't want them in the building. We, we, we don't want them to think, oh my, I don't want to use these vacations, vacation time. We want you gone, because we don't want it running through the building. So that was the intent of, of these changes. Just wanted the, the public to know, they're a good question, they were good questions.
All right, we'll move on to our, to letter E on the agenda, which is a public hearing that would appropriate $110,000 from EMS Revenue Fund to the EMS Expense Lines for Operating Expenses. And at this time, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to comment on ordinance 2018-09, an ordinance approving an additional appropriation? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move we close public hearing.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Public hearing is closed. And next, we have ordinance 2018-09.
Additional appropriation ordinance number 2018-09, whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, section one, be it resolved by the Council of Whitestown Civil Town, Boone County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sum of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified subject to the laws governing the same fund, EMS. Personal services, supplies, and equipment, $25,000. Other service and charges, other services, $15,000, training, $10,000, capital outlays, $60,000. Total for EMS, $110,000.
Mr. President, I make a motion, we go ahead and suspend the rules and have second reading on ordinance 2018-9.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Rules are suspended five to zero.
Ordinance 2018-09, additional appropriation ordinance. Mr. President, I move that we adopt ordinance 2018-09.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted five to zero. Next is letter F, resolution 2018-04.
Must have been the November magazine, Jeff, were you, and this is a good question as well, where we, you sent, I think you called or sent an email or something to Nathan. So we have the magazine, we charge, we, we, we ask people to, for profits mostly, but it's, this is a good question. We need to set it in policy. We sell ads to try our best to supplement the cost of the magazine. The magazine is very successful, very well received. And we need to put in, there's a, there was an unwritten kind of policy that Nathan used that wasn't, you know, he wasn't trying to do something that wasn't approved, it just made sense, was that if you're a not-for-profit, should we charge, say, a not-for-profit who just wants to ask for volunteers, one of our county partners who is bettering the county to, for an ad? Now, what I think, Nathan will probably elaborate on this in a second, so I'll be quiet. So this is what kicked off, what Nathan's gonna tell you in a second, was his solution to that discussion.
So what kind of brought the first one in was, had the requests and we have open space, where we have an ad, an article that's half a page, we have half a page left, filler, so we were looking at ways. So we talked to some nonprofits that were interested in finding about space, and we think it would be a great way to help promote those within our community, let our, the people in the community know where they can get involved within the community from, there's many nonprofits in Boone County. But it just gives out all, that space for them to come and say, hey, we would like to advertise in it. They are limited funds, we have the space available. We are, we're just under 2,000 last month that we were still subsidizing the magazine, so we've increased, the first magazine, we paid for the whole magazine, well, we had 1,000 in sponsorship, I believe, the very first magazine, like 1,900 the second, and we were just under 3,000 on the third. So it's increasing in the sponsorship. It should be zero-sum to where it's actually break even this year. And I think if we can do that and still assist our local nonprofits, would be great. We were looking at allowing them a, on a first-come, first-served for the year, and we still have to figure out how to really do that policy. And for each nonprofit, they can put in, first-come, first-served, to allow a total of one page that's dedicated to nonprofits in the magazine. If it, and that's in quarter-page ads, so that could be for nonprofits. If we only have two that month and they want to kick up to a half-page or something along those lines, we can work it. But we were staying at one page per month that would be dedicated to our local nonprofits. And if nonprofit A advertised in the first magazine and we had four that wanted in the next, they wouldn't be able to advertise in it, because they would kind of roll to the back of the line, so to say, with the nonprofits, until there was availability for them to be in it again. They would have the option to pay to be in the magazine if they really wanted their ad in there, but for the free space, we were limiting it to one page of total advertisement towards nonprofits.
I think this is, I think this is a good thing.
Yeah, I, when I, and if you guys saw it, what I suggested is that maybe we come, and it seems like you're kind of going in that direction, that we go to, say, a community happenings page. And a nonprofit, as you said, if there was just two nonprofits on a community happenstance, they'd each have half that page, but if there were several, that they could all get in on that page, so that when the residents open the magazine, they look at one page, okay, this is all the things where the, where the community happens. I didn't see where, I'd like to see something where it says there somehow connected to Whitestown, and that could be broad enough that, like this partnership here, could, if they wanted to advertise, they could get in there. But I would like to see something in there that it, you know, that it somehow said they had to be somehow connected with Whitestown.
But can we, can we trust our Parks Director or Town Manager just to do what's in the best interest of the town?
I, I'm not saying they wouldn't, I'm just afraid that we might get caught on something, I don't know. And I may be overthinking it. I'm not trying to.
And I like the idea of the community happenings, but what we've, we've done with spacing it is when we have those gaps where an article doesn't take up enough room, they work great. If you look through the magazine, you'll notice a lot of the odd-shaped ads from being the quarter page that goes across the whole bottom, because it's just, we don't have enough filler and.
Yeah, I think, like the American Legion Cub Scout Pack, hey, we're selling popcorn right now, during, during the one page, or, or the Girl Scouts when they're selling cookies, you know, or something like that, that they, they'd be included with that stuff.
Well, and I think recruitment for those, hey, it's open enrollment, get involved with this and get involved with that.
The Cub Scouts when they have their, their open enrollment at the beginning of the year.
Yes, and football registrations, or those kind of things are what we really want those to be used for not-for-profit events, like the fundraisers for any events, would prefer those spaces be reserved for how to get involved in these nonprofits, be it, we have the house build, there's gonna be another one next year in Whitestown, putting that out, because those are things we need lots of volunteers for. And we do partner as a town with them and do a town build, and it's those kind of things that I, I think the magazine could be great in advertising to. Like today, we got a survey in and the, the person loves the magazine, they put very highly on everything with the rankings. They're actually mailing the surveys back in, people are that, they don't have, nothing was circled in the electronic media. There, nothing, Facebook, Twitter, none of that was circled, they don't have that. So the magazine does give them the ability to see what's going on in Whitestown.
And possibly a compromise, Eric, is we pass the resolution like this, but then ask them to come up with a policy based on this resolution that says this is how a town can be administered.
I'm, I'm personally comfortable with the resolution as written, because I, I, I think you guys have done a great job with the Whitestown magazine, and I know you're gonna continue to do so, so. I would move that we adopt resolution 2018-04, a resolution concerning nonprofit advertising in the Whitestown magazine.
Second.
So we've got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
If I may, real quick, so I know you said you're comfortable, Eric, with it the way it is, and just some conversations we've had, you're gonna try to make some guidelines, you said, and that's really all we talked about, is when I reached out to you originally, I said, I agree that it's good for the town, I think it's great for the town, it's great for local organizations, we just need some sort of policy to make sure we don't go too far one way or the other. And that's really all we're trying to do here, I believe, so.
Yeah, and it's something new to us doing this magazine, and we know we're gonna have hiccups and stuff along the way, and we've discovered a few things that are, the process is getting a lot better. We know there'll be issues, but we think it's a great product and think the residents are really benefiting from it.
And it is, the magazine's fantastic, and, and this is a work in progress, there's no doubt about that.
Yeah.
Things are changing for going along.
I think the one thing is, we want to make sure everybody knows that everybody, there's, everybody has the opportunity, or all the certain types of organizations have the opportunity to get their free advertising in there, because I don't think everybody knew that. So that's what this, part of this is too, is just to make sure everybody's aware this is something we're offering as a town as well.
Yeah, I know we put in about if you're interested in space in the magazine, contact. Myself and Dex have tried to be less hands-on on the magazine, just to not feel like we're trying to run it, and it has a great committee doing the magazine, and I think they're putting out a great product, so we try to be as hands-off as possible on it.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
Upstain.
Resolution is adopted four to zero.
What?
She abstained.
She abstained.
Up next is letter G, resolution 2018-05.
Resolution 2018-05, a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, approving real property and personal property tax deductions in Whitestown ERA Number Two under Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1, Polymer Technology Systems Incorporated.
You might as well get up. Katie Culp, who is the, in, economic development consultant for this project, is, will speak, but I'll tell you that this is the kind of company that we want. I've sent out some emails to all of you explaining what this is, the investment, the building, the job creation. I think it's 55 new jobs, is that what we determined, Katie? At 4295 an hour. And so we've always said, right, since 2014, we made kind of a, a goal. And so we've always said, right, since 2014, we made kind of a goal, that economic development projects we tried to attract would be wages where people could live here. That is, this is one of those. And this kind of, I think consolidates their North American headquarters for this company, so I'll let Katie explain all of that to all of you.
Good evening, happy Valentine's Day. My name's Katie Culp, I am a partner with the accounting firm Cat Sapper and Miller and co-lead a division within that group called KSM Location Advisors, and have appreciated the opportunity to work with this group and, and with Dax over the years. And as a Boone County resident, I've enjoyed seeing Whitestown flourish and have understood just through talking in economic development circles, how important it is for you to attract a variety of industries. And it has always sounded to me, the vision that I understand, that to be very consistent with PTS Diagnostics, who is my client and why I am here tonight. And I'll tell you a little bit about, about the company. They are really a life sciences, high-tech firm. They develop, they do the engineering, and then they make various diagnostic solutions for a variety of kind of healthcare industries. They have a lipid analyzer that's really famous called CardioCheck, and then the A1C Now, which is a diagnostic tool available for diabetics. They're private, they were privately held company for many years, several decades, and then were acquired by a Chinese parent who owns a variety of companies, not just PTS, in 2016. So they're looking to expand, they are really constrained at their current location that's in Marion County. And so we've been looking across the region and even in other states, trying to figure out where to land. The site they're interested in, and what I'm here before you tonight about, would be to confirm property tax abatements if they elect to locate on this property. Property was considered earlier this evening from a zoning perspective. And so what this, these resolutions would do, would be that you all decided on the basis of 134 jobs moving from Marion County, and there may be some turnover there. And then an additional 55 new positions, and these are engineers, R and D, medical device development, quality assurance, and some sales folks. So that'll comprise the majority of the jobs, all of which, you know, kind of north of $40, $41, $40 is the new position average per hour. So you translate that out, that's a really strong salary. But so what we would be asking is that if all the details with the ground work out, and if the, this, this body determines that abatement would be a useful tool here, and they can work out a few more details, that this is a site that they would very much like to build on. And so you have the information about the company, I'm happy to answer any other, any questions you may have about them, or about the specific resolutions before you tonight, which again, it would be real property tax abatement, and then personal property tax abatement on our R and D and manufacturing equipment.
Are there any questions, council? Thank you.
Thank you for bringing such a good job, a quality product to us.
Mr. President, move the adoption of Resolution 2018-05.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted, five to zero. Next, we have letter H, Resolution 2018-06.
Resolution 2018-06, a resolution of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana declaring an economic utilization area for real and personal property tax abatement.
Part of the Green Park, which is now, we're going to get used to this, Park 130 MOU, which once again you all passed and signed in December, is to create the ability for abatement. First process in, in giving the ability to abate is to create an economic utilization area. The redevelopment commission has heard this and unanimously passed this, and now it's in front of you. So, Steve, there's one more step. There's a confirmatory.
Public hearing declaratory, public hearing, confirmatory. And then there will be individual resolutions for the individual buildings.
So you've done this before, Anson is a, what we call like a blanket ERA. Perry Industrial Park was a blanket ERA, so you don't have to create an ERA every time. As a matter of fact, I believe that the Park 130 folks have sent us the first application for abatement, which will be on the redevelopment commission's agenda soon. So that's what you're hearing tonight.
Mr. President, move the adoption of Resolution 2018-06.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted, five to zero. Next, we have letter J, Resolution 2018-08.
Resolution 2018-08, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana approving, one, a declaratory resolution, economic development plan of the Town of Whitestown Redevelopment Commission establishing the Whitestown Green Park Economic Development Area, and two, the Order of the Whitestown Plan Commission related thereto.
Thereto is only a word in the legal community, by the way.
Always love a good thereto, heretofore.
We still put it together, we're not charged for both words.
Mr. President, there are members, there are representatives from Park 130 here tonight who would like to give you a brief presentation. I think it's, I think it's worth your listening, so I'll go give the floor to them.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, my name is John Kirkwood, I'm with Faygrave Baker Daniels. Tonight with me is Jeff Lord and Larry Sigler, representatives of the former Green Park Development. We've renamed the project Park 130 at Whitestown. So this is the subject matter of the MOU that you approved a while back for the Green Park project. And we're obviously moving on, we've acquired the real estate now, and are prepared to tell you a little bit about the development. I think you're familiar with it, but in any event, Jeff, if you want to go ahead and visit with the council about your plans and some memories of the first two buildings that were developed and the overall plan and the project here.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Lord, thank you very much for speaking to you this evening. Happy Valentine's Day, Ash Wednesday, it's also my birthday, so.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, and we're all going to have to make it up to our significant orders tonight.
Park 130 at Whitestown is a 169 acre development. It's going to be built out in three phases, 2 million square feet of industrial product. We're going to build the first phase, we hope to commence.
Can I, can I ask you, he gets a little closer to the mic though, I'm hearing him here, that's right. That's what this is about.
Sorry. 2 million square feet on 169 acres, we're going to build it out in three phases. The first phase we hope to commence in June of this year. That is a change from previous presentations that I believe have been made to you. The economic impact of the 2 million square feet, we're anticipating about $113 million of vertical development, so it's a big project. We believe that our projected numbers are 980 jobs at $37 million worth of gross wages per annum. So I believe you have a copy of this overall site plan. If there are any specific questions related to that, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise I'll focus your attention on phase one of the plan. There are two buildings in phase one, pardon me, there are two buildings in phase one, 170,000 square foot building, and also a 357,000 square foot building totaling 527,000 square feet. We anticipate the construction time for these first two buildings, if we're starting in June, about an eight to 10 month construction period, and hope to lease it up very quickly. I think anticipated over a course of about 24 months. So that's the general overview. I'm happy to answer any specific questions, there's a lot more detail in your packet. I turn it over to you.
Any questions? Thank you. This is very helpful, very thorough.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, move the adoption of Resolution 2018-08.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted, five to zero. Okay, up next is letter M, Resolution 2018-11.
Resolution 2018-11, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana approving, one, a declaratory resolution, an economic development plan of the Town of Whitestown Redevelopment Commission establishing the Whitestown Endot Economic Development Area, and two, the Order of the Whitestown Plan Commission related thereto.
Dax?
Yes. Same thing, Endot, the Endot agreement that you signed for this kind of, the interchange, the midpoint interchange, which is, I don't know if I've seen an agreement like what we, what Endot partnered with us to do. They did not ask us for money upfront, they asked us that we create an allocation area and pledge 50% of development that happens to come there. We're not obligated if it doesn't happen, we don't have the increment to give them. Up to 10 million plus interest, which is going to be around 12 million. We think there will be substantial AV built in this particular allocation area, and there's a representative of the development group that is, currently has land under contract that could potentially help bring that AV, and that's Gershman Partners, now have Ryan come up. I made fun of him at the redevelopment commission, his brother was just on the 40 under 40 list, and I think he's trying to follow, he's trying to do as much as he possibly can to get on it as well, so I'm going to, I give it four, Ryan.
Good evening.
Good evening, happy, happy Valentine's Day to everybody. My name is Ryan Gershman, I'm a principal at Gershman Partners, we're a real estate development firm and based in downtown Indy. Had the opportunity to speak before the redevelopment commission, as well as the plan commission, and it's, it's an honor to speak forward to you guys here this evening. I'm here as a proponent of the new proposed TIF district. I prepared a few remarks, and then I'm happy to, happy to answer some questions. First off, Gershman Partners is pleased to be partnering with Whitestown on such a transformative development located at a new proposed interchange. The addition of a new interchange and the creation of a new TIF district will leave Whitestown well positioned for future commercial and economic development, which will result in increased value to the town and its residents. Our intent is to capitalize on this momentum to create new jobs and additional amenities, not only for Whitestown, but for the region as a whole. Gershman Partners has been working on a master plan and intends to develop 200 acres in the heart of this new TIF district. It is anticipated that preliminary infrastructure needs will be in the range of $12 million, made up of roads, utilities, roundabouts, traffic signals, and sidewalks, and that this will lead to a private investment that could exceed $100 million. The combination of this development and additional projects in the area will further drive the growth of Whitestown and its tax base. As plans for the development continue to evolve, we look forward to being back in front of this board, certainly with, with more details as we get further along in the development process. We look forward to further collaboration and a lasting partnership with the town, so I appreciate your time and happy to, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you for coming in tonight, we look forward to working with you.
Yeah, of course, appreciate it, thank you.
I just want to say that I'm very excited that Endot is partnering with us on this initiative. We are taking advantage of a blank canvas in this area, and we're able to put this intersection in, this interchange in, before any developments come forward. So we're not dealing with issues like they are in Fishers, where they're trying to create new intersections and try and jam these things into already developed areas. And the, to Dax's point, the deal that we got in the MOU with Endot, it really holds us harmless. If nothing happens, then nothing goes to Endot. But if stuff happens, Endot only gets half of what comes through, and then we get to take the other half to continue to develop and maintain the area. I think this is all around a great project. I am very excited about our partners who just spoke with what their plans are to develop, and I, I really am excited about this. Mr. President, I move the adoption of Resolution 2018-11.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Resolution's adopted, five to zero. Next, we have letter I, Resolution 2018-07.
This facility is difficult, and beginning to take up a good portion of our time. Ginetta was originally the one that tried her best to organize the renting. Nathan's department now heads it up with help from Becca. It's still very difficult. And so what we have in front of you is you passed a resolution, it's your last meeting, we put some policies in front of you, and I think, Nathan, you want to, you want to just discuss this tonight and add some additional, so why don't you discuss what those may be?
Yeah, as you know, it was in front of you a month or so ago, and it just keeps coming back, because the popularity of this place to rent for the fee is, it's very popular. Problem we're really running into is we are spending more resources than we're bringing in with a two-hour birthday rental that brings $60. We're spending anywhere from six to 10 hours of man-hours between setting up the rental, cleaning up, and we stagger three or four events a day on a Saturday. If the very first event doesn't do their job and clean up, every event we're getting complaints from of, hey, the trash was overflowing, there was birthday cake all over the floor. So we either need to get to the point of raising our fees enough to put staff here on the weekends that can do those things, cleaning the bathrooms, ensuring the facility's clean, or looking at doing away with the one-off rentals. We still want to work with our nonprofits, the Humane Society, the Boy Scouts, those kind of groups that they need these kind of spaces. But when it comes to things like birthday parties, there's lots of other places they can go rent. It's great to provide that to the community, but unless we raise our fees, or, which I think we have to raise the fees to put a staff member here and cover that, it's just, we're subsidizing birthday parties, and as a taxpayer and trying to be responsible in my position, I just, the numbers aren't adding up with it. It's, our one, our repeat leagues, we never mess with them, really. The, the IBA, Aaron's Dance Fit that's here, they're here two, three, four times a week, they have their space, they all work together with each other, the people before, the people after. So we, we don't have those problems. But it's these one-off rentals where somebody's renting it once a year, and they really don't care when they leave. I won't say all don't, but we do have, I mean, trashcans overflowing, pizza boxes, mess everywhere they're going, in places the building they really shouldn't be. We're looking at altering some security items, they've messed with the electronics where we've had to come in on Sunday and redo the whole electronic box because kids get up playing in it. And we don't know who's doing it, because it's in an area that's not camered, and it's, there's a lot of, and that's why I think the discussion needs to happen. Instead of us bringing you a new policy today, and then in 30 days, all of a sudden, we have a whole nother list of issues. Anyone who's got a current rental, we want to honor that, because they do have a contract, even if it's a birthday party or graduation party, wedding, a year from now. But to continue the way we're going, there's a lot more effort being put into the rentals than, I think it's, we're a municipal center, not a rental center, and it's. There's a lot of, and that's why I think the discussion needs to happen. Instead of us bringing you a new policy today and then in 30 days, all of a sudden, we have a whole nother list of issues. Anyone who's got a current rental, we want to honor that because they do have a contract, even if it's a birthday party or graduation party, wedding, a year from now. But to continue the way we're going, there's a lot more effort being put into the rentals than, I think it's, we're a municipal center, not a rental center.
Are we getting a damage deposit where we can claw their back if they don't clean up after each other and stuff?
Well, it's a month, it's an hour.
It's very minimal.
I mean, it's...
A $30 fee, but it's, there's times that...
Should we raise that too?
Well, we talked about for the one-offs, if you're renting it for your five-year-old's birthday party and we tell you the damage deposit is $100, we may as well just raise the rate. It's not necessarily, it's not necessarily that damage is happening because Chuck will come in on weekends and refill the paper and do his thing. The problem is if the building's so popular that to rent it, we're almost two to three and three to four and four to five. Yes, the birthday party's supposed to clean up, clean out back themselves unless they pay a certain fee, but they don't and Chuck can't hardly get here unless you have somebody here full-time. And if we have somebody here full-time, you're talking probably $100, $120 an hour to really make it work. So, it's just becoming a difficulty. Like Nathan said, it's a municipal facility, it's a complex, it's not a rental, we're not a, we've, what you, Nathan said best, we've out of courtesy to the public, given them an opportunity to use their building, some, it's not their building, it's from other communities. And that courtesy is now costing our taxpayers, if you will, because we're subsidizing those items. We need to discuss, is it a raising of the fee? Is it a hiring of an employee that works, you know, in tandem with Chuck who is a monitor of, you know, is here to watch people be here on those one-offs? Is it get rid of the one-off opportunity and leave it spill so that, not the profits, so that the plays and the missed outstanding team pageant and, you know, those places that have 5123 status that they can show us, can use the facility and rent it for one-offs and then we have the IBAs and those, that's what we're, that's what we're struggling with right now. It's just taking up a lot of... Nathan was on the phone yesterday, I went up to his office, he's on the phone for half an hour talking to somebody. He shouldn't have to be doing that. It's just, it's getting, it's got to happen.
I would expect the nonprofits especially to clean up after themselves.
They do. We don't have any problem with any of our, any of our partners who rent the facility.
And I know we had a little bit of discussion about this, about doing some kind of fee waiver for the nonprofits and you said it'd be difficult to administer and I'm not saying it wouldn't, but, you know, something like, say, the Humane Society, they come over to the farmer's market and they help the farmer's market by adopting and all that stuff, then they're able to bank those hours versus a fee of trying to use the place.
And it's...
Same with Cub Scouts or Scouts in general or something.
Yeah, my concern there is how do we set those fees of, and that's probably a Steve question of how do we say, you know, a five-year-old in Cub Scouts, their man-hours and, you know, helping clean up at a park versus a 25-year-old person that's coming out and helping us put up fence or do something. It's, it's, like I said, it...
It's difficult and I know.
It's $20 an hour.
And I'm not saying it's going to be a true solution, but just that we potentially look at that so that, as we were talking with the nonprofits and we were talking with the magazine where they don't have that money to spare, that we try to figure out something that helps our local nonprofits. But as a partnership where they have to step up and put, give their part.
And I agree. I just, I mean, it's $20 an hour to rent the facility for nonprofits if they're renting the gym, now the entire building's more, but $20 an hour if they're here an hour, two hours, that barely covers the time that Chuck spends cleaning the place.
Yeah.
So, yes, if we could come up with a way to work it to where nonprofits can trade time, but we're still, that's a, it's a hard one to come up with those rules. I think that's harder than just doing away with the rentals.
I think we want to move this on for another, we, in seriousness, take a look.
Well, from my perspective, if we're going to charge a fee so that folks have the opportunity to use the facility, then that fee needs to cover whatever services that are going to be incurred, whatever costs are going to be incurred. To your point, we don't want to subsidize birthday parties and other events. So, if it's going to cost us a certain dollar amount for hours worked and supplies, knowing what that cost is and then using that to identify what a potential fee could be, I think is a more reasonable way so that we at least stay cost neutral with the utilization of facility.
I think this is an example, I asked, my daughter's graduation party will be in the spring, I went to Moon Town and asked them how much their, to rent the event night and 15 room, it's $1,500. I'll say that again, my wife fell over backwards, but it's $1,500. So, if you rent her gym, it's not as cool, it's still a big facility. You can't rent it, I mean, at $30 an hour, you're, it's $1,500, you rent it all week. I mean, it's, I think that may be the problem. We still, even if we did rent it for that amount of money, you still got to solve the, somebody still has to, if they don't clean up, you still got that transitional time. Do you have a monitor here?
But I think that's part of the discussion. If we had an idea of what our fee structure would be, because that would be part of the cost, right? Would be working into it, what is the hourly rate for someone that would have to be here to clean up those pieces, to make sure that the facility was ready for someone? And then we'd have to talk about scheduling. You can't, you can't have events back-to-back. You can't have someone from three to four and then from four to five. You've got to work in some time there so that things can be reorganized and stuff like that, which would take a person on staff and that would be worked into the cost structure. That gives us a better idea on how, you know, what are the logistics involved to give it the full workup of, should we or should we not continue with the renting in general?
And that staff can't be just, okay, we got, we got the facility rented right now.
Well, next week we might have, not have that hour, that staff still needs to be here. So, the cost of that staff needs to be covered.
Can I ask a request of the council to nominate a member from council and create a subcommittee that can look at this? That way, we have someone from council providing input and working with Becca and Sarah who are doing the bulk of it to look at these rules. That way, there's a representative they can work with, with council, to bring something back to council.
I'd be willing to do it if nobody else is.
I'm sorry?
I'd be willing to do it if nobody else is. I'd defer if somebody else wants it, but I'm just saying I'd, I'd be willing to step up and do it.
I'm okay with you doing it.
Wonderful.
So, I will, I'll make the motion that Kevin assist you over the next month to bring something back.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
All right. We have, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted five to zero.
I remember, I thought we talked about this a while ago and you weren't worried about it until it became a problem and it sounds like it's become a problem.
Yeah, that, I did catch that. Maybe we need a few more cameras.
We've talked about that today.
All right. So, letter N, discuss town maintenance bond language.
So, Councilman Russell, I don't know, I can't remember if you sent it to everybody or just Jason and I. You sent an email back, it was, it was when the snow got a little heavy and we went in and we plowed Maple. This is because you asked to talk about...
I thought I copied everybody, but yeah, I, I will, I'm willing to take the lead and discuss that. We get, and as the, Jason discussed and clarified, we get the roads deeded to us, but they're under maintenance bond for a couple of years. And as he says, if we go in and we damage a curb or something like that when we're plowing, then the contractor or the developer is going to say, hey, that's ours. I don't want to see our residents have to pay for the plowing, but at the same token, I don't want to see us being responsible for that kind of thing where the developer should, if they're willing to waive any damage that we do, then we can take it over for the residents and I, that would be up to Steve how we do that, but I, I'd love to see us be able to take care of this. I saw the compliments you were getting, like even the clock medals where we threw some salt down. I want to see, keep our residents safe, but I don't, I agree. We can't do it where it's going to cost us. We have to have something neutral and we, maybe you have to have to develop a sign-off on this waiver saying, okay, fine, we'll do it, but we're not going to be responsible for damage.
Another thing too, is while that road is under maintenance bond, it does not have the top coat asphalt on it, just the immediate, intermediate coat and the snowplows will tear that up and we will have to pay for it.
But if they plow it, it's going to tear it up too, so...
Pulte.
That, to me, is neutral.
But the developer would have to pay for it.
Pulte does put that top coat on sometimes, even under maintenance.
Right.
Another thing that is, I'm glad, because Harvest Park and Maple Grove are just completely getting neglected. Their contractors were not in there. It was going to be very unsafe and then Josh sent the cavalry that day.
I'm not against us getting...
No, 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 what you're saying is, it's a good topic to discuss because we did send our crews in there and, you know, did we, what's liability, top coat is down in there, but Nathan also brought up a great point of the sidewalks and the driveways are under maintenance bond as well and if you throw salt down on concrete that's not cured right, you're going to get pits and who's responsible for the pits at that point? Can we go back to the developer and say, hey, this concrete's pitted now as part of the punch list before you turn it over to us? You have to fix it. They may say, well, you're the guys that came in and threw the salt down, put your plows down and so that's, it's a good discussion. We certainly can't...
We got all summer now at this point to settle this, but yeah.
Did you just say that we're not going to get any more snow and ice? Is that what you just said?
Yeah.
I think you're wrong.
Which means we'll have a foot tomorrow.
He said it. We haven't had sectionals yet, sir.
Yeah, that's the truth. This is true.
So, that's the only reason it was on here. I thought it was a good point and we, Jason and I talked about it and it's, you know, it's a, do you neglect that neighborhood? Because those neighbors don't know. Most neighbors think there's asphalt down, where is it? Where is it?
And here's the point where if the developer does say no, we have the ammunition to go right to, right to those residents and say, we tried. So, it's up to your own developer and that's why it's not being done.
Steve, is there anything we could do that, if the, if the developer neglects to keep the, even though the road is potentially under maintenance bond and doesn't have a top coat, is there any way, there's language we could put in if they're neglectful to the point where it's unsafe, that we could, we could do it without being held liable?
We have in ordinance on sidewalks, don't we?
Yes, but what we're talking about is, I mean, you know, it is a lot cleaner, and Jason and I talked about it, it's a lot cleaner for us not to do it until the maintenance bond runs out because the maintenance bond is essentially an insurance policy. So, that is not an agreement with the developer. That's a third-party insurer that if we go in and do damage to the road during that maintenance period, they could deny the maintenance bond coverage. So, it's just, it's kind of the way we've always done it, not necessarily the right way, but it is a lot cleaner. Now, could we, could we start requiring, you know, through our planning, when they dedicate roads that, you know, start putting more enforcement language for them in terms of going, I mean, that's one way we might be able to look at doing it, but, you know, if you're asking me, what's, what protects us the most, it's always been, no, they need to, they need to clear it until that, until that three-year period runs out, we get to find a top coat on it and then we'll take it over.
But what do you do if it creates a public safety hazard?
Yeah, I mean, you can go in and do it. There's nothing that stops us from going in and clearing the road, but it may, it may need the maintenance bond. That's the issue, that's, that's the risk.
And can we change the, I could be wrong and I might be, but can we change the language to, they have to plow sooner instead of waiting for four inches or so many inches?
Merit, merit of town plowing policy?
That'd kind of be a function of planning, maybe?
Yeah, it would be, it would be something we would do through the planning.
Commitment?
As a, as a commitment really, when they get their development, their final development approval. So, we would need to go back and probably amend the unified development ordinance to add language.
Because then that would require them to do it sooner rather than waiting and I think that's what was going on with Maple Grove is the contractors were just following what they're required to do, not...
The first note, Harvest Park was completely missed. Yes, timing was the issue with Maple Grove, so...
And then, if we're going to do it, also, it's probably better if our town employees do it rather than a subcontractor because we'll be a little more careful.
We, yeah, we, we wouldn't send a subcontractor into a street like that.
Right, so at a minimum, we want to do it ourselves for anything under a bond.
Yes, we wouldn't.
Well, if, my preference is we don't do it while the bond is, if we don't have it, if we feel like there's an emergency where we have to go in and do it, then, yeah, I would, I would have us do it instead of sending in a, I don't, we don't subcontract now.
We do, some of it, Lenny does some subcontract for us.
Okay.
Because we're one of the few communities that will send trucks into the neighborhoods while we're doing the mains. That's why we're praised so highly.
We could blame you with it.
We could. Could. Right. So, it's a good topic and...
We have...
We have till next summer. According to Councilman Russell, we're not going to get any more snow and ice.
There we go.
It's fine.
We'll see.
All right.
That'll be one attention, that'll be broken right away.
No more snow.
All right, we'll move on to town administration report.
Roundabout will start soon. I know that we just made the large payment out of the Maple Grove bond to the state, Total cost of roundabout ends up being around four million, I think, three and a half, four million. It'll begin soon, it will not close. Road will remain open, which means roundabout will take a little bit longer to construct. But there's really no way to close the road. We talked to, we had lunch with Lance Lance, Zizeville Street Superintendent this week, Jason and I did, because we were concerned that Zizeville was going to start their Cooper Road Project this year and essentially close. We didn't have a roundabout under construction there and a roundabout under construction here and be trapped. They're not, they're doing that next year, so it was a good bit of coordination, coordinating on our part, just to get that information. We have a solution to the, to the median issue now. It's a relatively inexpensive solution to the drainage in the center median. Obviously, we're not planting anything right now because the ground's frozen, but once the ground breaks, we'll begin that process again. Jason and I have our priorities for MVH projects, which we'll send to you. There is some neighborhood paving this year because we went through the Pazer and quite frankly, our streets are in good shape. One thing I do want to mention, we will be putting in front of you probably a proposal from engineering firm to design Main Street. We resurfaced Main Street in 2015. If you drive Main Street now, the same thing that happened then is happening now, where the shoulders are cracking off. It's gotten pretty bad through this freeze, freeze thaw. It's time to, to design and begin the process of probably in phases, tearing Main Street completely out. Super two is what we think would be best, the engineers are going to tell us that. Curbing gutter, first phase from Schooler Drive to Boone Meadows, second phase from 500 South to Albert S. White and last phase from Albert S. White to the Legacy Core. So, we, that's coming. Indianapolis Road is going to be probably likely, if we have, on the paving schedule this year. It's not that bad still, but we're starting to see some wear and tear in Indianapolis Road. So, Indianapolis Road from roundabout south to our town border, we'll get some pricing on, on it as well. Everybody's off and running for the year and we'll put goals in front of you in March because I know it's Valentine's Day and, and everybody wants to, and Ash Wednesday and all kinds of things, so everybody wants to be out here. That's all I have unless you have any questions with me. Okay, thank you.
Quick question and you probably don't know the answer, but could you look into this? I noticed on the, on the town website that it showed the EDC had a meeting on February 5th, but that wasn't noticed or anything.
We didn't notice a meeting, we'll notice a meeting on the 5th of March. There won't be any business other than to elect officers and to approve minutes from our last meeting. You will have an EDC meeting coming up for a couple of EDRBs, which are related to the TIF districts that we talked about tonight. So, Park 1311 and Economic Development Revenue Bond, it's likely that there could be an Economic Development Revenue Bond issued in the Endot area. You had two other resolutions tonight, which was the GCI allocation area and Mauer, so it's coming up. So, we'll notice a meeting in March. I'm sorry.
I don't object to...
Yeah, I should have, I should have taken the March, the February 5th off and put the March 5th on, so...
I, I don't object to putting off the election offices and everything till we have everything, so if we got some other business on March 5th, that's fine, but if it's going to be April or whatever, that's fine too.
Might be nice to get the officers done and get the minutes approved so we can, because those minutes need to be attached to whatever bonding was done. So, get those minutes approved and then we can talk about these items as a group moving forward.
Okay.
And the, and the website's a work in progress, okay? It is a beast and I was shocked that Fishers has... It is a beast, and I was shocked that Fishers has a web manager for what they get paid. I understand that, because I stayed, I stayed up till 1:00, 2:00 in the morning at my house working on that thing, and it is, it's just a beast. So it's a work in progress, bear with it. It'll be done, done soon, and we'll let you all know when it's done, done.
Okay.
Thanks.
Make a motion to adjourn?